All right, we're going to get started. I'll call this meeting to order.
Who else is in the room?
We have a couple of-
Sorry, who else is in the room?
I hear you. We have a couple of IT people, we have the auditor's office, we have Christine Stinson, two representatives of the press, Ron Cross, Beth Fields, Kim Walton, Roger Smith and myself, and Eric Marsh on camera. So, Ken and Steve, Mr. Poust and Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you.
And all, and the other five council people are on the telephone. All right, let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
United States of America. Which stands one nation, whose liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all probably should know that there's a bit of a delay when you speak, so when you all speak together, it's very disjointed, but that's fine. You are more than welcome to put your phones on mute if you choose to, but just remember to take it off of mute then to be able to speak to us. The first thing on the agenda is approval of the council minutes of March the 4th. Do we have-
This is Chris.
This is Gary. I approve.
Chris started, so I'll take Chris's motion. Gary, will you second that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Auditor, will you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Gillum?
Count, maybe I should, Councilman Gillum?
Yes.
Who's next?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Roger Smith?
Aye.
Bob Chamnus?
Aye.
Jeff Plaster, aye. Gary Saunders?
Aye.
Chris Beeson?
Aye.
Beth Leisure?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no appointments today. New business. We have the Public Health Director, Christine Stinson. Christine, and we also have Health Officer, Dr. David Jettmore. Thank you both for coming in. We want to get an update on the COVID-19 situation in Wayne County, and then we will deal with a couple of issues for the Public Health Department.
Okay.
Welcome, Christine.
Dr. Jettmore, join me up here.
And David, and staying at least six feet apart, I'm sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the cases continue to rise in Wayne County. We have morning briefings with Reed Hospital for situational awareness. Wayne County did see two more residents test positive over the past day, bringing our total number up to four right now. Those are just the ones that have tested positive. So, it's important for the public to understand, there's a whole lot of people that are going to the doctor, the doctor, they don't meet that matrix for testing, and the doctor feels like they have COVID-19 directs them to go home and convalesce in their homes. So, we know there's a lot more than just four cases of COVID-19 in the community, but we are starting to see increases in the positive ones that are needing hospitalization from Wayne County. Still doing a lot better than some of our surrounding counties, and I believe it's because we came out early with some directives, and we appreciate the executive branches of the community supporting the health department's directives as far as closing some of the nonessential services before Governor Holcomb's stay-at-home order came into effect.
I know this has been repeated from many, many sources, but if you would just take a moment to remind people of the best ways to prevent themselves from getting sick.
Right. The best way is to stay home. If you're an essential worker and you have to be out to, first of all, if you're feeling sick, to stay home. If you have a fever, a cough, stay home. That's the best way to keep our numbers down in Wayne County. If you're sick, stay home, and only go out for essential services. That's the grocery store, medication, doctor's appointments. Wash your hands frequently, and wash your hands correctly. There's a great video that Eric Marsh produced that shows people how to wash their hands for 20 seconds, using warm water, soap, a vigorous scrub, and then rinsing and drying completely, and covering your cough. And if you have a mask, even homemade mask, it's coming out that it may be better in this time that we're seeing an increase in numbers to wear a mask when you go into public. But definitely, if you have a cough or a fever and you have to venture out, to wear a mask.
And anything to share with people about when they have to venture out to go to the grocery store or the pharmacy? What kind of behaviors to-
Yep.
...model at that point?
We still are in the social distancing. I like to call it physical distancing now, because in this time, we still need to socially connect with people via phone and checking in on elderly family members, friends and neighbors. So, physical distancing of six feet, that's so if there's any spray that comes from another person's mouth, you're not going to get directly hit with that. So, six feet of physical separation between you, washing your hands frequently. We are seeing an increase of numbers of cases in some of the higher counties, coming along State Road 1 and State Road 47, coming across those counties.
State Road 40.
Forty, I'm sorry, forty.
US 40, National Road?
US 40, yes. And so, we've asked gas stations to do a better job of cleaning the handles of the gas pumps, but it's important for people to understand what high-touch surfaces are. Door handles, gas pumps, the punch keys at the grocery stores. If you can't use a barrier to use those, then make sure before you touch your mouth, your nose, or your eyes, that you wash your hands properly after touching high-frequency touch surfaces.
Okay. Dr. Jettmore, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't, Christine's presentation was once again so stellar that I have-
As always.
...to add, except to say that I'm really proud of our fellow citizens. When I go to the grocery store or somewhere where I have to be, people are taking this seriously. They're distancing themselves, there's a line of tape on the floor in front of the cashier at the grocery store or the drugstore. And this, I think, is why, even though we see an increase in cases every day, it's a slight increase, especially when I compare ourselves to our neighboring counties to the south and to the east in Ohio, or, I'm sorry, to the, yeah, to the east in Ohio and to the west. So, we're going to see more cases. There are cases in the community that are not being tested because they exhibit the classic signs of COVID-19, they're being sent home to isolate, but this is going to go on for a while. The peak is probably weeks ahead of us, maybe months, but we'll get through this. We're doing all the right things, so.
Could we talk just a little more? You said that there were cases associated with Indiana 1 and US 40. When you say that, do you mean they live along those routes, or they've been, they've-
We have a, we have a map that shows where all of the positive COVID-19 patients live, and we can see clusters along these byways, Indiana 1 and Highway 40. And the one thing that people would do along these roads is stop for gas or stop at a convenience store. I think one of the simplest things to do when you get gas, there's usually towels there to wash your-
Windshield.
-windshield. Take those towels and use that to grab the gas pump, and then discard the towel.
And wash your hands before you eat, you know, after doing any kind of event where you're touching high-touch surfaces. It's early to tell whether gas stations are implicated in this. It's just something that we're seeing, and we're really new in this epidemic to be able to make a sweet bean case that, you know, it's, you know, we're just, we're just seeing trending, and so we're trying to get out and mitigate as much as we can. And when we see something that's piquing our interest, like these clusters along these byways, well, what's the commonality there? Gas stations, is, was my thought. So, I went out to the gas stations and talked to them along Highway 1. So, but it's important that the public continue with these stay-at-home orders. Governor Holcomb's stay-at-home will sunset on April the 6th at midnight. I fully expect that he will extend that. So, I believe that that will happen. He hasn't extended it yet. Yesterday was when the restaurant closures of dine-in-only sunsetted at midnight, and he extended that to April 6th. I believe probably on that date, he'll marry those together into one big order that will extend. I hope he's not going to do it week by week. I think that that's tough on the public and tough on businesses to have such uncertainty, you know, doing it a week at a time. I think that if we extend this out, at least to what the President ordered through the end of April, but I think that Dr. Box has been talking about the epidemiology of Indiana, we're going to see it peaking toward the end of April, middle of May. So, somewhere in there. But, once it peaks, doesn't mean that we're over with this. Like Dr. Jettmore said, this is a long haul. But I think that we would start to see, once the peak and we start to downward, we could start seeing the lifting of the order amongst certain populations, where the younger that have a better immune system would be allowed to come out and function a little bit wider than the whole entire population, you know, Katy bar the door. It's important that churches are heating to the stay-at-home and limiting services and doing as much as they can virtually. Across the nation, we've seen several churches implicated in widespread outbreaks. So, you know, those are some of the things that I like to get out to the public, that information.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in today. Counsel, any questions for Christine or for Dr. Jettmore?
Jeff, this is Chris.
Yes, Chris.
I just want, I just want to say, I'm very thankful that we have a health director that I sound, I have a lot of, have a loss of words again here, a lot of the belief in, and so I'm glad she's come along at the right time for us.
And I think the same goes for our Health Officer, Dr. Jettmore. They've done a great job during this process, so thanks for that comment, Chris. Anyone else?
This is Gary.
Yes, Gary.
This is Gary.
Go ahead.
I've got to echo Chris the same, but we really didn't intend to baptize them by fire when they took on the job in January, so. Thanks, Gary.
Yeah, it's been baptized by fire, that's for sure.
Let's, let's move on to the next item, the additional appropriation of $500,000 for the Public Health Department. This has been advertised, is that correct? So, we have proof of publication, and this needs to be a public hearing, am I correct on that? Mr. Cross?
I believe.
So, I will open the floor for, for a public hearing on an additional appropriation of $500,000, which is already in the Public Health Fund, number 1159. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
I'm in favor of it.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
We have a motion from Mr. Smith. Do we have a second from, was that Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Beeson. Any additional questions or comments? If not, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Roll call vote.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Beeson?
Aye.
Mr. Gillum?
Aye.
Mr. Chamnus?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Plaster votes aye. All are in favor, the public hearing is closed unanimously. So, comments, questions? I'll start off by saying, this $500,000 was intended in the original budget that we put forward for Public Health Department. It was not transferred to, or moved into the Public Health Department until after the Department of Local Government Finance had finalized the budget process, and so it was not appropriated, and we need to do that now. There was, I believe the actual budget was $179,000, something in that ballpark that was approved by the DLGF, out of about roughly a million dollars that we had envisioned as their budget. They have spent close to the total amount of what has been appropriated, so this will allow them to operate for the foreseeable future, and will keep on top of their needs in this kind of unique situation. Any other comments on the appropriation?
This is Gary, I move for approval of the appropriation.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Robert Chamnus, second.
Robert Chamnus, second. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the, whoops, sorry. All in favor of the roll call vote. We will start with the roll call vote. Mr. Beeson?
Aye.
Mr. Gillum?
Aye.
Mr. Chamnus?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Plaster votes aye. That is seven in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Let's move on. Let's, let's go ahead and, since Christine and Dr. Jettmore are here, let's, let's talk about the hiring process for the Public Health Department. As you all will recall, there have been positions posted for registered nurse, for LPN, one for medical assistant, and one for medical clerk. My understanding, Christine, is that you have interviewed candidates for the registered nurse position and the medical clerk position, is that correct?
Yes.
So, where are you at then in that hiring process?
We've actually made the offer, and they both accepted the positions.
And just for informational purposes, as I recall, we were waiting for you to rewrite the job description for the medical clerk, so you're extending an offer as that position was originally posted?
Yes.
Is that correct?
And still hoping to get that reclassified.
Okay, so where are you at in that process? Have you submitted a new job description for-
I've been working with Kim on that, gave her some language. I'm not exactly clear how it got classified to that, so hopefully with some of the language that we did, because there would, there would create quite a wage discrepancy in my staff to have someone at such a lower pay than some of my others, that job descriptions are very, very close to them. So, hopefully we can, we can get that taken care of, but.
Okay. And Mrs. Klausler, is that now with our consultants?
Yes.
Being reviewed? Okay.
We're only about a two-week turnaround time.
Okay, well, keep us posted, and hopefully that can come to Personnel Committee at the May meeting of-
Yep.
-how we deal with that particular issue. In the meantime, the LPN position and the medical assisting position remain posted, but you're not moving forward with those?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not moving forward. I wanted to put the two key players in motion right now. Public health nursing comes to our department June 1, and there's a lot that we have to get done with that, along with COVID-19. But getting the RN and the medical clerk in place allows me to get some of the programming up to speed, and then I want that RN to have, you know, say in who her staff will be as well.
Sure, okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for Public Health Department on the staffing issues? If not, we will move on.
All right, thank you guys very much. I appreciate everything.
Thank you very much for the work of both, of the two of you and your staff.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And your board, I might add. You've got a lot of people working on this, and-
We do, yeah.
We certainly appreciate it.
Every morning, Dr. Ryder is in the call with Reed Hospital and Dr. Jettmore, and so we have a very active board that's, that's closely following everything that's going on.
Great.
And I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming in. All right, let's move on. There's a transfer request for the Prosecutor's Office.
Yes, they need to transfer funds from a salary position that has not passed the bar just yet, and they've had to hire someone to come in and work contractually, and they need to transfer $11,451.49 to be able to pay the contractual person from Deputy Prosecutor Line to-
And that is the, the line item that had been, the Deputy Prosecutor was the one that we had, there'd been anticipation that that person would pass the bar, and they have not, so this has been transferred out of there.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so the request, as you heard, is to transfer $11,451.49 from Line 11291, the Deputy Prosecutor, to Line 33200, the contractual services line. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some.
Yeah.
Some.
Let's, let's get a motion in a second, and then we'll follow up with questions. So, there was a motion by Mr. Smith, and-
Second.
A second by Mr. Gillum. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Now, Gary, you had a question?
Yes, say this individual passes the bar, will there be enough money in that fund for the rest of the year?
Yes.
Can we transfer this out?
Yes. This is the money that's, that's available in the event that we get notification that the person has passed the bar.
There may be a need to transfer it back into the-
Right, it would need to be transferred, depending on the timing, would need to be transferred back from contractual, back to the prosecutor line item, whatever was unused. Okay?
I'm okay with that, Jeff, Gary.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, we will move to a roll call vote of the request to transfer funds. Mr. Beeson?
Aye.
Mr. Gillum?
Aye.
Mr. Chamnus?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Plaster votes aye. We have adopted that transfer unanimously. We have no old business. Commissioner's comments, Mr. Poust? Good morning.
Good morning. And welcome to our council meeting here this morning. Nice to hear that all of you are at home and safe and practicing, stay at home and washing your hands several times a day, even if you're at home and you think you're safe there and no problems. I'll talk briefly about the projects we have ongoing in the courthouse and the annex at this time, and then briefly about what we've been doing with COVID-19. The courthouse, HVAC system, the cooling tower is in, and this hookup should be completed by the end of this week. The final work on the third floor, and the handlers began this week, and the courts will be on a limited schedule. The final work on balancing the system and the remaining items will be after that, and most of this should be completed in the next two to three weeks. So, that project has moved along very smoothly without any complications, and Roger, as you know, that's great when we have one that's moving on schedule, no complications. So, keep our fingers crossed. Jail bond project, of course, that's a rather large project that is moving right along. The work continues on the outside walls and on the electronic film windows. As you know, we did a tour here a couple of weeks ago, and you got to see that process of how that works. That's, that's quite, quite an innovation of what they're able to do when you throw that switch. That screen is there immediately, so that's worked very well for them. They're very well pleased. The water management system, the installation has started on that, and the replacement of the VAC system on the second floor in the enforcement area has started as well. And visit restrictions have caused some problems, but that's, everything's moving along with the folks, we're getting them in and out okay. On the jail courthouse security, as you know, we've had several meetings so far on that, and the project's schedule has currently, at this time, on the week of April the 6th, the drawings and specs will be reviewed. On April the 15th, the Commissioner's meeting to approve sending the projects out for bid. On April the 16th, then, the drawing, the specs will be prepared and sent out for bids, and we would receive everything back on May the 13th. We would hope to receive bids at, at that time if everything works well. The other project in the courthouse on the Guardian Lightroom, that work has begun this week, and we're relocating the vending machines first and putting the power lines in that we need. Once we have everything in place there, we'll continue on there. We do have a wall to pull out and, in the old lunchroom, and as soon as we get that out and do the flooring, we have a lot of work to do on the flooring. That's the old flooring that was in there many, 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 many years ago in the one-story area on there, so that one is moving along slowly, but I don't see any complications in there as we move forward on that. As far as COVID-19, the last two weeks since that has started has been quite active within county government, as well as in Wayne County. I can't say enough about Dr. Jettmore and to Christine Stinson, our new director. Chris or Gary, who said we didn't intend to bring them in here under fire, no doubt about that. Dr. Jettmore came on board in January, Christine came on board in February, and in March, all of this COVID-19 broke before they were hardly in place and moving. We're in constant contact on a daily basis. They are in contact, as they told you this morning, with Reed Hospital. We do have a task force that does conference calling every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday as we're working with all the parties involved to make sure that not only within the county, but within the county complex, that we can keep government up and running. A lot of changes have been made within the Annex Building, as well as the courthouse building, as we're functioning. as we're functioning. The courts are functioning on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, and appointments can be made in any of those offices on the courthouse side or any within the Annex side. Just call into the individual office. They're all working from home. The office is here in the first week as we went to make all the changes, not only within the complex of getting in and out of the Annex here. I can't say enough for the individual departments who have volunteered and stepped up and said, Ken, what do you need us to do? And they were right there to work with us, whatever we needed them to do, and so, that has worked very, very well for us. I'm very proud of all of them. We're working currently at this time to see if we can get masks. We may have a contact that we just had a conversation on late yesterday afternoon where we may be able to get some masks for folks to be able to wear. So, we're working on that. We're looking at other things that we can do as far as our cleaning and everything. We've passed out wipes, we've passed out sprays to all of our departments. At the same time, as I'm talking about the great job that they've done, I wanted to talk about the outstanding job that all of our essential offices are doing. Sheriff's Department, the 911, and our Highway Department, that are working full-time but at the same time practicing six feet. Wash your hands and wash your hands. If you don't have to go out, stay at home. But those folks have to come out every day for your security that you have within Wayne County government. So, I thank those folks for what they're doing and their dedication to their job. So, that's where we are. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and then I have some closing remarks that I would like to read that I think are very pertinent to what we're doing here in Wayne County. So, any questions, members of council?
Well, I would just say, and I know it's difficult when you're thanking people for the contributions they're making. I think, I think the list goes beyond what you just said.
It goes on and on and on.
The building and grounds, security. Every office has people that are, are working every day to provide those essential services for the people of Wayne County. So, I definitely want our employees to know how much we value them and, and how much we appreciate their hard work. You know, we had IT people in here just to be setting up the equipment for this teleconference call, and, and, you know, there are people in, in probation that are, are working hard every day. The people at the jail obviously need to be there, so.
They've all been there 100%.
Everybody, everybody is, is operating at 100%, and, and we're all concerned about the situation, but realize how important those activities are to, to the people of Wayne County. So, thank you very much to our employees.
All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Poust?
If not, I'd like to close with this then.
Can I, before you start with that? I want to say particularly to Mr. Poust, who is in here every day working on these issues, thank you very much for all that you're doing. You're, you're a tribute to, to public service, and I really salute you.
Well, thank you very much, Jeff. Couldn't do it without my staff. They have been in every day.
Yes, they have.
And we're keeping the six-foot distance on there, and without them, I couldn't keep everything going into county. It's important to keep the county government up and running, and for doing that, and thank you very much, and I thank them.
I do have to say, it took a while to, to train you to not give everybody a pat on the back every time you saw them. Six feet.
It is hard for me when I'm saying, thanks for your job well done.
It is.
Yeah. Well, anyway, this was in the Wall Street Journal Monday, and, and I cut it out, and I thought today at this meeting that I would read this. This was an ad that the Realtors Association put in a full-page ad in, in the Wall Street Journal, and I thought it was so, it just hit home for what we're telling the folks, and we can't say it enough. If you have a business that's essential and you have to go to work, we want you to wash your hands and wash your hands and wash your hands. You'll just hear that over and over again. But then we're asking the folks, stay at home, stay at home, and stay at home. So, I'd like to read this ad to you that they had in here, and it's titled, "Home: A Word That Today Takes On A Whole New Meaning." In these troubled times, home can be so much more than a physical space. Home is our workplace, our daycare, our school, our gym, but above all things, home is a shelter, a place where we can retreat to, where we are protected, shielded, secure from the outside world. A place where we can be our realist selves. And while these days it can be difficult to feel confined, remember what home is: a sanctuary, a heaven, a place where we will weather a storm that, like many others, also so pass. Stay at home and wash your hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Anything else from council?
This is Chris.
Yes, Chris.
If, if, nobody noticed at this point, if we meet on April 15th, would we, would we use the same telephone numbers and so forth? Do we need to keep that information? Or would it be a changed set of numbers?
I'll send it out again, but my plan at this point is, is to not meet on April the 15th.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to cancel that meeting at this point because it's hard to know what might come up, but my thinking at this point is that we would not meet again until May the 6th, but I don't want to officially cancel that April 15th workshop because we may have something that we need to address.
I, I fully understand.
Okay. All right. And I'll keep you posted on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else from council? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Robert Chamnus, move to adjourn.
Okay. I'm going to give that one to you, Mr. Chamnus. Thank you. Is there a second?
This is Chris, second.
Yes, thank you. There's a second. Let's take a roll call vote on adjourning. Mr. Beeson?
Aye.
Mr. Gillum?
Aye.
Mr. Chamnus?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mrs. Leisure?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Plaster votes aye. We are unanimously adjourned. I would just remind you to please stay on the line for the personnel meeting, but this meeting is adjourned.